All right, it's 6:01 and I will call the meeting to order. And just notify everyone this meeting is being recorded. And also if anyone is intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me, the chair, at this time. Anyone plan? Okay. All right, we'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize, we're going to have to go into executive session first, but it shouldn't be long. But we'll have to ask you all, well, we have to make a motion first and to go into executive session, but then we'll have to ask people to step out for a bit while we meet, but it really shouldn't be long. So, why don't you make a motion?
I know I'm not up yet, sorry.
I could've just asked earlier. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session, MGLC 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiation and A Halifax Teachers Association and executive session to pursue into MGLC 30A, S 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law approval of executive session minutes of August 26, 2024, and then return to regular session.
Second.
Okay. We'll have our recall vote, you're welcome. Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Myself as yes. All right. So move on. Review and vote the regular minutes of our August 26 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. Do you recall Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself as yes. And now the MOA discussion and possible vote. I'll make a motion to accept the MOA relative to the specialists that have gone to Point 8.
Second.
Is there any discussion that anyone wants to have? Nope. All right, we'll take a vote then. Lori?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself as yes. And now I'll turn, we are going to have a presentation on the Community Preservation Act by, Niffen?
Hi, I'm Candy Niffen, I'm chairman of the ballot committee to support the Community Preservation Act. My husband is also on the committee and we're here together tonight to tell you a little bit about it and to hopefully get some support from you. Halifax is the only town in the region that does not subscribe to or has not enrolled in the Community Preservation Act. What the Act does briefly, and I actually have some brochures and information that I brought that you can get at your computer. But what the Community Preservation Act does is it allows communities to put money aside for specific areas. One is historical preservation, one is open space and recreation, and one is affordable housing. And there is an assessment that the townspeople pay, but there are also generous abatements that is in the legislation that we're proposing for people who simply can't afford the average in town right now for, if we're gonna have it right now, the average would be $80 a year of state money, a household. Lori asked me to speak specifically, if I could, to what the benefits might be for the schools. And I just want to say that my kids, our kids all went through the Silver Lake, through Halifax Elementary. My husband was on the elementary school committee. They went through Silver Lake, I was on the Silver Lake school committee for a period of time. We've all, everyone on our committee has been on numerous boards and committees, so we're all lifelong Halifax, well, we're all longtime Halifax residents who raised our kids here. And we've also done various boards and committees and we're really dedicated to the town of Halifax and we've demonstrated that. So specifically to the schools, the first thing that comes to my mind is a lovely historical district because I can remember when my kids, the oldest of whom is 50, went on field trips down to the historical district. And we had a working blacksmith shop, the elementary school, a crockery store, the museum, and we have such a lovely historical district that the problem we have right now is that we can't, and they saw working blacksmiths in the blacksmith shop, which I took today cancel because the blacksmith shop is not safe to go into. That would be one area that would be eligible if we applied, that would be eligible for community preservation funding. And if you've been to Halifax, Holidays in Halifax, we flock to this historical district. It would be nice. And in the early days, we did see, when we first started Holidays in Halifax, we did see a working blacksmith as part of our holidays in Halifax. We can't do that anymore. Another area would be the walking trail that we supposedly have that goes behind the school. It's in, badly in need of renovation or restoration, and that would be an eligible project which would allow classrooms, of course, and students and townspeople to go on that walk and use it. It could be a nature trail. There's so many possibilities right now, it's not really anything for us because it's so overgrown and it's so unavailable. Another area was that I just learned about, well, another area would be our playgrounds. We have a lovely playground, Hops playground, that could've been done in two years. Instead, we fundraised for, I believe, six years to get what we have. If a piece of equipment there or here needs to be replaced, that's an acceptable expenditure for community preservation funds. If we decide to expand Hops, we can do that with CPA funds. So all of this is funding that doesn't need to come out of six years of fundraising or our budget, our town budget, our school budget. One area that I've just learned and still learning about is the opportunity, which, and this would be probably more applicable, but I don't know, to the regional level, but is regional cooperation. Four towns, doesn't matter who they are, but four towns in the western part of the state, a regional school district got together and completely renovated and resurfaced the tennis courts at the high school, at the Royal High School, which is used by students and adults from all four communities. That's significant, and I think, actually, all six towns on Martha's Vineyard also have done regionalization projects with CPA funding. We're the only one in the region that doesn't have that right now, so that to me is another reason that we need to get involved. But even my understanding, our understanding at this point is even if the other two towns didn't want to use CPA funds, we could. So there's a lot of flexibility in that, and I think that's important. If you go through, if you look at past town reports, you'll see a lot of projects, particularly at the regional level, but a lot of capital projects that we could've used CPA funds if we had them. And that would free up more money, and we believe that would free up money for additional needs, whether they be transportation costs or sped budgets, or we hear all these, or adequate or additional staffing. So we don't, quite frankly, we don't see a downside to this, but when it comes to the schools, we really think they could be one of the biggest beneficiaries of the CPA funding. And I think CPA has been available since 2000, and what's special about it is that it comes with a state matching grant. We raised a certain amount of money into town through the assessment, and then the state gives us a percentage. When it first started, and for at least the first five years, the state match was 100%. And then the word got out, and so there are almost 200 communities involved now. So it's not quite, it hasn't been that. And then we hit COVID, and then we hit the downfall of the real estate market for a while, and the high cost of mortgages. And so the funding has been less, but it's averaged 26% over the last five years, and we don't know of any other place you can get that kind of return on that fund. The other thing that, the one other thing I would say about that is the towns that got in early, like Plymouth, like Kingston, have brought in huge amounts of money. Kingston went in right when it started at 3%. You can assess, the town votes, but you can assess anywhere from 1% to 3%, and like I said, there are abatements, so it's not based really on the tax bill, it's based on the value of your home, and then you can put a bait in, you have, there are eligible abatements. But Kingston went in at 3% and have done so many projects, they were getting 100% match, they brought in over $9 million over the years, and they did, they just went back to town meeting not long ago and reduced it to 1% or 1.5% because they felt that the town was so supportive that they didn't need 3%, the 3% assessment. So I think a lot of towns that joined early have done amazing things. And you can go on the state website, actually, the website for the state is in our brochure. Also, we formed this committee because we really were shocked at how little people knew in this town about the Community Preservation Act. So our primary goal originally, although we've been upfront since day one that we are unanimously on this committee in support of the Community Preservation Act, our primary goal was to tell people about it and get the word out, get the information out. So you'll find in there that we also have our own website, where everything that we've put out there is on our website. We've been putting our regular documents, answering questions, just giving information, any information we can find that we think would be useful, and that's all on our website. We also have a Facebook page, and everything we do goes on our Facebook page. So people, and then we have an email, which is all in there, and the email was established right from the beginning because we wanted people to be able to ask questions, so we would know what to look up, what to go to the state and find out. And then we've posted all the questions and all the answers, so there's a ton of information. And we're hoping that you're gonna all come out and vote and support the CPA on the ballot, it's question six on the ballot in November. And we've worked hard, but more importantly, there's so much there for Halifax, so we hope you'll learn about it and support it. And I'll answer any questions.
I have a question. So you know what, what would the total be that would, if, with, it's a one, we're requesting a 1% assessment, or is that right?
We're requesting 1.5%.
1.5, okay. So what would that equal as far as funds put aside, just like the total amount, because I'm curious, you know?
Well, we have to own, we can only base it on the average home.
An estimate?
Which is now 511,000 in Halifax. And so it's a little over a quarter of a million dollars that we would raise at the local level, not counting what we would get at the state. And that does change every year. Just a quick note about where the money comes from, it all comes from, the state has a Community Preservation Trust Fund, and the monies from that fund, for that fund, are all from the registry of deeds. So when you take out a mortgage and you have to register your mortgage, that fee goes in the Community Preservation Trust Fund. If you have a home equity loan and you have to pay it out, the fee is a hundred and some dollars, that fee goes in the Community Preservation Fund. So we believe it's gonna go up as interest rates come down, we believe a percentage will come back up, but...
Because people would be contributing, well, there'll be natural contributions as the real estate market?
And interest, it'll, yeah, interest on the money that's there.
And the tennis courts back here also could be something, right?
The tennis courts, we've actually mentioned that because I think that's a wide issue for the town because they're unsafe, they have falling power. But that would be a project that could be done in the first year if the town chose to do that, and we could renovate and new tennis courts or pickleball courts or bowls. So I think, I think the reason we're excited about it is because it's just got so much for all of us and all ages. Open space is one of the ones that, you know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of open space that the town owns. There's a building going up in town, well, a few buildings going up in town that are 55 and older companies, that are quite controversial. If we had been part of CPA, we could've purchased that property years ago and wouldn't have to build on it. So I mean, we have no options right now, we can't, we don't have a lot of clout with builders in terms of even getting them to set aside a few units for affordable housing. We didn't, none of that's happening right now. And it could happen very easily with CPA funding.
I just think of all the things, and I mean, I was around for the whole raising for the Hops playground, and so, and it took so, my kids were grown by the time it actually got built.
Yeah.
I mean, literally.
And that's...
And it's wonderful to drive by and see so many people at it, and you think, we have some stuff on this playground that needs to be, I mean, I just think it would be nice if we had some wiggle room with our school budget, which we know has been a struggle to fix these things for our kids and the community since it can be used after hours. I mean, that's...
I think too, the other consideration that we've talked about is some of the things that need to be taken care of will need to be taken care of at some point. And right now, the only option is to go for either cut budgets majorly and no one's floating in money, or go for overrides. And we all know how that works, and how successful that may or may not be. So right now, we have some choices. We don't know how long we'll have choices, but this will help us for a long time. And my grandchildren enjoy the playground, so thank you for your work.
I didn't do it, I did a little, but I just remember, you know? Like, how long I thought?
And actually Jonathan, who was the community coordinator for Hops, is on our committee and working hard, so. So I think if you, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, I just, I have a couple of questions that I'm not sure if you can answer them. I think that all of these projects that you've outlined are certainly needed, it would benefit our town. But one of the questions I had is with relation to housing, so there's a thing here that says 10% for community housing. I hear from critics of this that there is a concern about how projects are chosen, that this is a way to take the choice away from people, funnel money towards housing projects that maybe people wouldn't want, they would prefer the blacksmith's shop to be repaired. So I guess two questions, how, who makes those decisions on what projects?
The townspeople do at town meeting, and not one penny can be spent from...
So it has to be voted on?
CPA funds without town meeting approval. But regarding the housing, it's nothing, this has truly nothing to do with the upcoming MBTA community vote.
Right.
But the CPA gives us total control over making decisions regarding housing. They also support and ask us to support reuse of buildings before we look at new construction. And it can be very simple, it can be taking a house that's abandoned, or maybe someone has an elderly family that wants their home and they can leave it to the town, we can fix it up, we can buy homes for back taxes often, we can fix them up, sell them as affordable housing with deed restriction that when those people sell that house, they have to maintain it at the affordable housing level in perpetuity. And so unfortunately, these big projects take, get a lot of attention, but they don't have to be big like that. And this gives us a lot of control. Also, just as we're talking to a gentleman at the state level, who said that most towns don't spend this money right away, they have, you have to put 10% of the money you bring in into that, we're calling buckets, for affordable housing. Some of them let it sit there for, well, he names some towns that let it sit there for 15 years. It accumulates, it gets interest, and then a big project they want to do, maybe it's taking an abandoned building and renovating it into 10 homes, 10 units for veterans or seniors, or they would have the money to do that when the time comes. Plus, there's a lot of grant money available, so this money in CPA can be used to leverage matching grants, and a lot of towns have done that, where they just use the CPA money to pay their match, and then they've gotten tremendous grants at the state level. So I think if anything, this gives the town much more control over what's going. The other thing is we don't have an affordable housing plan, we don't have a housing plan. If we had funds, we could hire a coordinator to develop, a professional to develop a housing plan for the town of Halifax, and that would give us even more control than we have. And we have to admit that at some point, we have to do something with our housing. We have people at Worden Halifax who have been waiting for us for decades, so I mean, it's, it's...
Well, I know a lot of the towns, I've seen the benefit in Kingston, Duxbury, of people having, you know, and, I mean, it's worked for people I know, but... The other question I have is it could do, we could also build a senior center or renovate, right?
Yeah, someone's getting one free, right?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I know, I'm just saying, like, I know, like, there's all these things that, you know, we've talked about for years and years that...
We would have a senior center now, I'm certain, if we had joined this in 2000. But we can't look back, we just have to do it now and go forward.
I think that, I'm just gonna aside, I think that the timing is unfortunate because this, in my opinion, is a worthwhile project. It's a worthwhile opportunity for our town to invest in, but everyone is so tight and stretched and at their limit, so you're dealing with that, you've, you have people that are saying, "I just can't deal with any more taxes." The MBTA affordable housing project, I don't even know what to call it at this point, but there's a lot of like mishmash of misinformation and everything getting lumped together. And I think, I appreciate that you're coming and sharing some information. I think that people should look into what the benefits are. I'm happy to hear that ultimately, if this is something that's passed, nothing gets done unless it passes town meeting vote, which is how we do things anyway. So I just think it's, I'm hopeful that this gains support, but I think it's, the timing is really challenging. I hope people will understand the long view and not look at the short, I mean, if we had done this a while ago, it would've benefited us, so...
I would just say to them one thing, and that is that our tax bill is our tax bill. This isn't gonna change it, it's not gonna increase our tax bill, it's not gonna lower our tax bill, we all just got our tax bill. What it's gonna do is give us another pot of money that we don't have, and also that we fully control. I mean, it's not like the Colliance community, they draw the stabilization fund, and they decide who gets that money. This is 100% decided by vote. If it passes, then we establish a bylaw that establishes a community preservation committee, and states specific about five members of that being from conservation and housing, from special areas, and then four members, up to four members at large. And then that committee studies the town's resources, capabilities, needs, and then they accept applications and they go over the applications. It's quite a detailed, safe net for us, for our money, because it's totally accountable to us.
But ultimately, that board doesn't make the decision. It is the townspeople at town meetings.
I would say that the decision that board makes after studying all the applications is what I would assume they would prioritize based on the number of applications, the number of need, and then they go to a meeting and put up, they give a presentation and they give their recommendations in the form of art.
And so during that process, if folks in the school system felt like, hey, this is a project we really need help with, then that would be the board that would, we would bring that to, correct?
Yeah, and they would review it. And you would, from what I can tell in other towns, there's plenty of opportunity to meet with the board and explain your application and document your application. So I think it's a board with a big job, but it's a more job.
Yeah, absolutely.
But you're absolutely correct, the timing is tough, but once it good, you know, it's unfortunate that it conflicts with the confusion about the MBTA, and you're right, there's a lot of misinformation out there, which is what, when we established our Facebook page, we didn't take comments, any comments, because we don't want to, all that misinformation and all of the material, so we just answer questions and post information that we stand by 100%. So hopefully...
Thank you for the work.
Thank you so much for letting us...
Any other questions? No, thank you for coming. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. And then Lori asked to add a full regionalization discussion to our...
I did.
Agenda, so, sorry.
No, it's... Yeah, so I don't really have like a firm talking point, but we have had, over the course of my time on the school committee and even before, I feel like there've been lots of side conversations about what a true regional district would look like. At this point, we are, we are a school committee within a larger school district, and our larger school district has four school committees, I may be mischaracterizing it. But we all consider ourselves part of Silver Lake, even though Halifax School Committee is its own separate entity, and Kingston and Plumpton have their own separate school committees. But I think we all recognize that there needs to be some symmetry in the way each of the elementary level school committees do things. And although we have some standards, I think that especially during this past budget season, I feel like the pains of us not being a fully regionalized school district felt more deep. And I don't know that our budget situations are going to get better anytime soon. So I think the time, it's probably overdue for us to have some sort of conversation about what do we do to start making steps towards full regionalization. I'm sorry if I'm overstep and Jill, but did you want to weigh in? Yeah.
Sorry, I was listening.
So there is a Community Compact Efficiency in Regionalization Grant. Last year, this committee voted to support the town of Halifax looking into that grant. Last year, Kingston applied for that grant. Kingston School Committee also voted to support looking into that grant. What that grant would allow us to do is for the town to look into the pros and cons, the benefits, and perhaps the downsides of full regionalization. Last year's reconstruction came about because although we may feel like we're one big district, we are actually four separate financial entities, and so we can't realize the savings as a full regional district that we might be able to realize if we were fully regionalized. That's not to say that there aren't things that people may be... That's not to say that there aren't things that people may be concerned about with full regionalization. But an inquiry using grant money in this way to find out what are the pros and cons, and then providing that information to the communities to decide what's best for the communities, is what was originally voted upon last year around this time to ask the town to please apply and look into this.
But we did not get the grant, correct?
Last year, we did not get the grant.
So can we apply again, or it's like, or like, is there a way to move forward with the study? I know it's expensive, that's the concern.
We can ask the town once again to apply. I have two out of three committees that are in favor of looking into this. I do not have the unanimous backing of all three communities.
Do we have to have the unanimous backing of all three committees to look into it?
The town does not.
So the town can apply if we suggest, but not, you can't do it as a district because we don't have all of the committees in agreement?
We don't have that support.
So we can take another vote to ask the town to apply again?
Yes. And the Silver Lake School Committee, if I recall. I know definitely Halifax and Kingston. I'd have to look at the minutes to see. But I feel like Silver Lake also eventually voted to, to support looking into full regionalization.
So if we don't get the grant, are there other options to look into it? Like, is this information Russ could provide, or, like, I know we had to do-
Yes.
Okay.
Russ can provide us with the legalities, the concerns that may arise, some of the misconceptions that people have about full regionalization. And that's one part. But in terms of the economics, this would be, what the grant would allow us to do is to have additional support to look into-
Yep.
What are the potential savings? Which, which we don't have enough staffing to provide that kind of in-depth study. Most districts don't. And that's why they offer these grants.
So I have a couple of questions, and I don't even know if these can be answered here. But I'm curious as to how many other districts like ours exist, where there's a regional high school in all these, you know, three towns.
But Manhattan is not fully regionalized either.
But it's two towns, or three.
It's not, there aren't many regional, partially regionalized districts left. There aren't many. I don't have an exact number for you.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question I would have.
Regionalization is fully regionalized, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Free Town Lakeville is fully regionalized.
Yeah.
King Philip is not fully regionalized, but they operate as, as a secondary district with its own superintendent and school committee. And each of their elementary schools are their own separate elementary schools with their own superintendents and budgets, so.
Wow, that feels, that sounds expensive.
Yes, exactly.
So I mean, there's, the majority of regional school districts are fully regionalized. There are some examples of partially regionalized, and those are some of the examples that we know of.
So, I mean, you know, we voted last year to look into it. My, I don't, I don't want, like, I feel like, you know, we didn't get the grant last year. Every year, we put it off. I feel like more information helps us make a more educated decision because I don't think the way we're running is efficient. Now that we already learned to regionalize, you know, for pre-K, then not for K through six, and then regionalize again, it just feels kind of, especially now that we've regionalized pre-K, it's just, it seems so, I don't know what the word is, but-
NESDEC is an, is an organization that may be able to provide that kind of a study that's independent. The only thing is, is that it's, it's ideal to have an independent-
Right.
Person come in to do that assessment. So again, if they were to come in, we're talking probably thousands of dollars to have that kind of study done without the grant. So I think you, it's something that we can certainly look into. I think that we should definitely look into the grant. I don't think it hurts to try to apply for the grant. And if that falls through, having a backup of what, what would the cost be to perform that kind of a study?
So I kind of think of this, and it's different, but I think of this along the lines of the different times that our school district has looked into changing the start times of schools. Having later start times for the high school, flip-flopping things. And that's a subject that's come up a few different times. And, you know, we've done the work on it and the research on it, and we always knew that it would be a process to get it there. And it worked for some districts, and it hasn't worked for ours. We've stuck with what we've done all along. But I think that it's important to keep doing the work to figure out, you know, times change. What worked 20 years ago might not work today. And if we were to, you know, maybe it isn't the right move for our three towns to be fully regionalized. But if we were to, that's not like a flip of the switch. That's gonna take time. So the longer we just hold off even having a conversation about it, I feel like we're not helping ourselves or our community at all. My personal opinion is that I think we should ask the town if they will apply for the grant again. But also, I would like this to be a standing agenda item where we can just check in this year and if there are any updates, progress, so that we don't have to, like, if things come up in conversation that we feel like, hey, this would be another reason why regionalization would be a good idea for us. I feel like we are very constricted to, if it's not on the agenda, we can't have open conversation about it in a meeting that is for the public. So I'm hoping that others would be in support of that.
I think it's a good idea, because it's kind of frustrating to be a year later and have no movement on it when we've been talking about it, so.
I don't, I don't think that's unrealistic to not have movement. I just think it's, it's gonna be a long process. I don't know, maybe not. That could be-
I mean, we got, we got the prepaid regionalized pretty quick. It was a little painful, but we did it.
And I mean, I would also ask, you know, Jill and others that are more, you know, experts in this area to, you know, bring your opinions, thoughts, concerns as they come up to things that we should be thinking about or looking at. I know that we, as a school committee, vote on, on the matters, but, you know, you are entrenched. You are the expert at the table of education, so we rely on your insight a lot. So thank you.
We'd be happy to.
So do you want to make a motion to have the-
I would like to make a motion to ask the town of Halifax to apply for the grant to pursue regionalization assessment. I'm sure I'm not saying that right, but also to add as a standing agenda item the topic of regionalizing the school district, full regionalization, at each meeting.
Okay.
Yes, I can do it.
Can we vote? Oh, any more discussion? Can we add and possibly, sorry, explore, find other ways to explore beyond the grant? Because it took a while to hear about the grant last year.
We can't control how, how quickly the state moves. That's, it's state-funded and we're at their-
Mercy.
Mercy, but what I can do is I can contact NESDEC and get an estimate from them to see if they even do something like this, and if they don't do it, if they know of anyone who does.
So should we make a motion for that as well?
Or you can just ask me to do it.
Okay. I don't know.
I feel like keeping it on the agenda each month, because it just allows us that opportunity, like, oh, Jill, can you also?
Yes.
We have a question about this and stuff.
No, yeah, that would be great. No, yeah, will you do that?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
All right, take a seat, have a vote. Okay, Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself as a yes, okay. All right, special town meeting discussion. That's you, Lori, right?
I know.
No, it's fine. That's what we're here for.
So we have a special town meeting coming up in December, and I just asked for this to be on the agenda, to be mindful of the time, that if there is an opportunity, if there are things, I'd ask Jill, if we could put this on the agenda, and that if Mr. Bowdre could also give us any thoughts he had about things, projects, anything that we feel may be needed to discuss as a possible article by the school on the upcoming special town meeting. So that we're mindful of getting our article in on time, so that we're on a warrant, that we don't miss an opportunity if we need funding or support for something, so. Mr. Bowdre, did you have any thoughts?
Right now, we're working with Mike Lawless about the boiler, replacing the boilers. They're under warranty currently. They're 11 years old approximately. But we are waiting for the mechanical contractor to provide us, so we would have to pick up the labor cost. And we don't know exactly what that would be.
Okay.
But the boilers are under warranty. So as soon as, I think Mike gets an idea of what that would be, that would be something that we would go to the warrant.
Okay. Do we have a sense of if we'll have that information back in time to put something on the town warrant? Or should we ask for space on the warrant preemptively?
I don't, Jill, are you aware of, of the boilers set up with Mike and where he's at? Like, we're just waiting on, you know?
No, I think we're just waiting on a quote.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I guess my question, I'm just looking to try to be efficient. And I don't know if there's a way that we can request something beyond the town warrant with the dollar value to be determined at town meeting. So if we know we have this need and we don't have the exact dollar value we want to ask for on the warrant of what the labor cost would be, I'm assuming we would have that information before December's town meeting. Is that correct?
The main thing is that Kane and Mike work together on a number that gets into the warrant article that Sarah will present to the town. And it can always be reduced-
Yep.
If in fact, you, you don't need as much as you originally estimated.
Okay.
But the, the main thing is making sure you meet that deadline.
Okay. And the deadline, I'm sorry, I don't know it off the top of my head, and I should. But do we know what the deadline is for submitting warrants?
I am emailing Cody to get that.
That's why you are the best. I know I saw an email that came out, I think Caesar sent it, about the deadline. I just don't have it off the top of my head. So would provided that we need to have an actual number. Is it a, I mean, can you follow up with Mike Lawless to kind of prompt him a little bit and tell him this is something we want to put on the warrant, so hopefully that we can keep that moving?
Parts are already here.
Okay.
We just need somebody to give us a quote-
Okay.
What the work would be.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, it's, it's getting cold. I think we, you know, we want to be proactive.
Are you broken right now?
They're just, they're in constant disrepair. We get service calls, like, through the night. I mean, they're only 11 years old. They're not.
No, I know the heating's always been kind of wacky in the door, so.
It's just that there's three, there's three boilers, and there's just two of them that just, we're constantly chasing them.
Okay. So they're only 11 years old and they're still under warranty, which is a good thing for us.
But they don't cover labor, just parts.
So right now, the way that if we would, we would foot the bill for the labor. Is that, that's the way I understand it, for changing out the boilers.
Even though it's under warranty?
That's-
I think so, because if you buy a boiler just because you have to install it, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, if it's parts, you're replacing the actual boiler, not just fixing it.
Fair.
Just making sure.
I'll talk to Mike Lawless.
Okay.
More definitive.
Yeah, so this was another question I had, and I don't know if this is the place to talk about it, but what prompted me to think about this is last year during our budget conversations. We, we talked about potentially asking, asking or requesting a bill, an article at town meeting to charge for busing, to charge a fee for busing. And I remember us having the conversation when we were talking about ways to decrease the cost of busing versus cutting, cutting buses. And that has been a conversation that has gotten a lot of attention from parents and feedback from parents about the changes that have been made to the bus schedule. So I thought it would make sense for us to talk a little bit or get an update on how the new bus process is working.
I'm gonna ask during his principal update, we've prepared, just so, yeah, just I don't want to get ahead of, because it's kind of a different subject than what we're-
No, I appreciate that. The only reason I bring it up here is, is there, is there something we should consider? Or is this something we should talk about for our annual town meeting?
So we, I, we were advised in the past that we weren't allowed to charge for busing as part of a-
Yeah.
Regionalized district. However, as you asked me to point out possible benefits-
Yep.
If we were a fully regionalized district, Halifax would be eligible for that regional transportation reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Cody got back, I'm sorry, town manager had got back to me. The town meeting warrant articles are due November 4th.
Okay.
And our next meeting is November-
It's, it's after that.
So if that's the case, and we do want to try to put something for the boiler on, how can we?
You can, you can ask for an amendment to include the estimated costs as presented by Principal Bowdre and the facilities director upon receipt of those quotes. And that would allow Sarah to present that on behalf of the school committee.
Okay. So should we take a vote now at this meeting to say we would like to add that as a warrant? Okay. And then in November's meeting, we will provide the detail of the estimate, is that? Or we'll vote of the actual estimate, is that correct? Process? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion. We add an article to the warrant and submit that to the town to add labor costs for repairing the boilers.
Second.
Take a vote, Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right. Town administrator meeting discussion. Lori, again.
Oh, all right, so I'm just gonna, I just wanted to note that we had this meeting, really. So there was a meeting in September where the three town administrators invited representatives from each of the school committee, and Sarah and Jill, and to kind of talk about the budget process and how we can work more collaboratively. I think it was a really positive discussion, and it talked about, I, I think it, in my opinion, as someone who attended, it brought to the forefront even more reasons why we should be functioning more as a regional, a fully regional school district. There are certain bylaws that Kingston has that conflict with the timeline of what our budget process has always been. That's not something that applies in Halifax, but again, like, the, I, I, that's not, that's Kingston's problem, but it affects our, our entire school district. So I just wanted to kind of put it out there that, you know, given all the, the starts and stops and conversations around school budgets and budget cuts, that I think it's a good sign that our town administrators wanted to have this collaborative meeting. There was a lot of information shared. They're, they're gonna look to start the process a little earlier, or at least the conversation process a little earlier. So I don't know, or Sarah, if you have anything else you wanted to add. I just wanted to point out that the meeting happened and give a little update for the public.
Anything you want to add?
I, I would just add that I started working on the FY26 budget back in August. So keep, keep in mind, I started working on the FY25 budget on December 1st. So already, I am months ahead.
Yeah, and that, I think that can't be understated, that last year's budget had a lot of different-
Unique challenges.
Yes, it, 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 this is not, it's not the same every year. There were things that happened last year that probably won't happen this year, but we learn from what we experience, so it seems like there's lots of lessons learned, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have the fundraising policy discussion that Jessica requested.
So the Booster-Thon, I love the Booster-Thon. I think it's great. But I don't love the idea of kids getting individual prizes for their families or getting donations. I feel like it's, then kids are coming home and saying, well, I did get this, now I need you to donate money. I don't think kids, especially in the elementary school age, should be thinking about money at all and who has more and who donated more, and I don't think that it's fair to the little kids that are thinking that. So I wanted to make it that, a fundraising policy that individual prizes can't be given out to kids based on monetary donations.
Do we already have a fundraising policy for, like, as a school policy? Okay. Do, I haven't looked at it, so.
I have it in another email, I can find it. But it, it doesn't say anything about like that. I just, I mean, I thought it was just me, and I had been, been talking to other moms and a lot of, and parents, a lot of parents feel the same way about the, the individual prizes, and then, like, I know my son went to school with, like, $6 of his birthday money, so he could get a keychain that is worth probably 50 cents. So it's just, you know, I just, it's not fair to, to the kids that are, and like, to the parents that can't afford to donate money, and then they're-
I see your point, but then if we, I mean, then how, what about Spastic Book Fair? Like, you know, some kids can't afford buying books. I'm hesitant to make policies like that, it's, and- It's, and I did see the emails sent to the PTO and I thought their response was really great.
The Booster-Thon can be changed.
I know, so I, I hesitate to make a policy just because, and we couldn't make a policy tonight anyway, it would have to go to the policy committee and then it would have to be written and then it would have to come back and be voted on.
Yep.
But, um, because there's different things that can happen as far as rewards for participating in the fundraiser, um, I, I hesitate to make a policy just to, because I think it opens up a can of worms as far as what fundraising can happen. And so, um, I think in this case, the PTO is extremely responsive and listening to people's concerns and.
Well, if, if we don't make a policy, then I think we should make it so that the Booster-Thon does change to not give out individual.
I think the PTO did say they would do that.
Yeah, they will. But so, I guess they've been asked to do this before and have it.
I invited Keith over here and he's from Booster-Thon, so knowing this was going to be a topic of discussion, so.
Yeah, so Kane asked me to join the meeting, um, I guess I'll stand up.
I have to acknowledge, right? Oh, sorry, I have to acknowledge your ability to speak, sorry. Sorry, yeah, it has to be the chair. No, it's okay, I'm sorry, it's just following protocol. Um, anyway, no, but you, you're welcome to speak and, um, yeah, share about.
Awesome.
Which it is, it's, I mean, it raised $37,000, so I, I mean, and having been on the PTO, I know that's unbelievable for not that, I shouldn't say not that, it, there's work to it, but after being PTO president for two years to see that kind of money is really amazing. So I, you know, I feel like this is definitely something that can.
Well, and I think that's my, my job, working with PTO, working with Kane, um, is to really customize the program to best it, every school, every community, obviously, every, but every school and community has a different stance on where they're at with individual prizes, where they're at, how much they want to fundraise with Booster. So I started with Booster back in 2017. I'm born in Norin, born and out of a, raised in Norin, like, total local guy, um, but loved what Booster brought, um, to schools and just raising the funds in a short amount of time does, you know, major thanks for schools. Um, the, my job is to help customize the program for whatever that school is doing. Of course, Booster over the past 20 years has seen that when you do individual prizes and students are motivated to go home and talk to their parents, that's where most of the fun, like, the fundraising is at its highest level, the fundraising piece. But sometimes there's some, you know, give and take on how much, we raised $37,000 in individual prizes, does that mean we, you know, might raise $34,000 if we're doing a little bit different prize model? Um, some of the things that we do is whether it's a tiered prize level where everybody's earning the same thing all together, or hey, we're still doing those individual prizes because it works really well, but then at certain points during the program, everybody's getting something, whether they financially contribute or not.
And everyone got a T-shirt, right?
Everybody gets a T-shirt, everybody gets to do the, the event. The other piece is that it is a character enrichment program, so, um, it's something that I know we're working on a lot more of vocalizing, but this year, students learn all the focus, creativity, what it means to be a life learner, trustworthiness, respect. These are all lessons that the students are learning throughout the course of the day. Halifax has, uh, our full service, so with that, there's team members on campus, we're interacting with them, we're spending time with them in the classroom, being these positive role models. Um, so this is something that all comes with the program. As far as the prizes go, there's no right or wrong way to do this. Booster, uh, originally, you know, they're from the south and they just said, hey, everybody does individual prizes. And since we've, since Booster's moved up into the northeast and we've just seen it, our job is more to customize rather than just set the agenda, our job is to customize that program for what works best for the school and for the community. Um, that's, I mean, I sat in a post program meeting with Kane and Liz and, and Lindsay, of course, and, um, it was, uh, very clear that, you know, maybe the individual prize model isn't going to be the best, but like I said, there is some give and take on how many, how much funds are going to be coming in if we're not individ, if those students are individually because they want to earn that next prize level. So, um, but just, I want everyone here to know from a Booster standpoint, like, there, we are not, there's no tie into a certain type of way we're doing prizes. It really is about us sitting down at a planning meeting and saying, this is what we, this is the plan that we would like to see forward and then deciding on what does this look like for fundraising and how can we adjust that based on the fundraising needs? So, um, yeah. I mean, does anybody have any questions about that?
I mean, I, I feel like I would rather leave this up to the PTO to work out, you know, and if there's concerns you have, like as a parent, you could talk to the PTO about it, but I feel like we shouldn't, as a school committee, involve ourselves that much, you know?
I will say, your concerns are heard by Liz and the PTO. I know that that's why I'm here. It, it's important to me to let you know that I care about the school and the community and that I want it to be the best product we can put out there and, and have it be for exactly what you all, like, the entire community wants for.
Yeah, we can leave, I mean, we can leave it to the PTO. It doesn't, I guess, need to be a policy unless it comes back again in a couple of years that we want the individual prizes again, but, I mean, I have kids in the school and more coming in, so it's, it's concerning for me for kids to be worried about money. I mean, I sit here once a month and give my time to the school, so for my kid to come home and be like, oh, I now need you to donate money to the school, it's like, okay.
I will say the language that is shared with students, we never mention the word money, that's something we, we're not, we're not mentioning. We mentioned fundraising, we mentioned helping your school, um, we don't talk about prizes. We talk about working together as a team, we do challenges. Yes, one of the things that we might do is, um, is do a incentive where the, the class working together that raises the most for that one particular item, might do a fun thing with the Booster-Thon team.
Yeah, I like, like, that was good, that was like the pajama day and movie day and stuff like that, like, that's great.
Just know that the team in Booster's language is about.
I wouldn't think that you would, I just, the kids already know anyway and like, they're showing off their little keychains that they're getting or their bracelets or whatever it is that they're getting and then the other kids aren't getting it, so that's.
Yeah, something, something that Booster does is everybody is, just in the, in the, just the basic pro, like, the regular, like, standard program, um, even for registering, students earn a keychain, so there's zero, there's zero financial contribution. Even if a student's like, hey, uh, my family doesn't have internet, we can register them, they'll get a keychain, just, just for, just for, you know, we call that our participation. So, but that's just the standard.
I'm, I'm not like franking on Booster-Thon, like, I think it's, I think it's great, like, I love raising money for the school, it's not that I don't like Booster-Thon, I just, the only problem I have with it is the individual prizes for the little kids because, I mean, my son's six, so to think like, oh, mommy didn't give any money, you know, and I, I've heard the same concern with a lot of other parents and I totally get going to the PTO, so I did that, but a lot, like, I just, for the public here, like, we, we, this is, this is what we do here, like, we're working for the public.
Yeah.
I wanted to just let it known, like, hey, I'm, I'm working on this for our kids too, like, if I, we change to a policy or we don't, I just, a lot of other parents stepped up, I had some messages on the side from like a post or whatever saying that they didn't like it either, their kid came home crying, blah, blah, blah. So I just, just, you know, I'm not like ranking on the Booster-Thon, I want our school to get money, you know, I, I like book fairs, I like all the, all the fun stuff that the school is doing to raise money, it's just the individual prizes, I don't want my kids or anybody's kids to think like, we need to bring in money so I can get a prize, I just don't want kids to be worried about money during the day, there's, you know.
I'm like, can I, I wish Katie were here because, um, back in the day, we were co- PTO presidents in the middle school and we did a calendar raffle fundraiser that was at that, it's really hard to raise PTO money at the middle school because you're there for two years and you're gone and usually by the time the kids get to the P, to the middle school, they're, the parents are tapped, they're done, they've fulfilled all of their fundraising. Um, so we did a, a big fundraiser and we brought in over $20,000, which was the biggest fundraiser to date, and it was a small group of people that did it. We were really mindful of the whole, we don't want kids to have, um, to feel separate. We tried to work out rules where as long as you sold a raffle ticket, you were entered into like random drawings and stuff, but we still had individual incentives. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is it is so hard, it's the same five people that are trying to figure out how to make these fundraisers work, but I think everything you're talking about is definitely important, um, and warrants the conversation, and I wonder if there's an opportunity to have, like, I'm not, I can't remember who our PTO liaison is, but, um, to have the, like, a chat, like, feedback after the fact, like, when you guys are thinking of these big fundraisers, can you, like, here's some feedback we got from parents, can you think about this?
I think that's been happening.
Yeah.
Honestly, like, from the, from the experience, like, there are good emails, like, you know, it's, I mean.
They got back, they got back to me quickly, it was, I'm not, I'm not ranking on the PTO either, I'm not, you know, I just, I like the PTO, I like fundraisers, like, you know, I got kids in the school.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to lend support in, to what you're saying though, because, I mean, I, I was a girl scout leader, I hated the cookie prizes that all the kids, we decided as a troop, we're not getting those prizes, nobody gets prizes, we're all just selling cookies and earning money for the troop and that's it. So I completely understand it, we as a, as school committee have to be aware and guard the culture of the community and the values that we want our students to have. So I think, I appreciate you bringing it up, I just, um, it's so hard to fundraise, so.
Because very few people participate in it and, you know, I mean, feedback's always important, but Karen, what do you want to say?
Oh, just one more again, uh, I just want to circle back and make sure that we're all clear with end result here because Jessica, I heard you say that we don't need a policy unless we bring back individual prizes and I feel like that's sending a message to the PTO that they're not able to make their own decisions according to us here as a result of this meeting. So I just want to make sure it's clear of what it is because as it sits right now, the PTO is able to decide what they want to do for fundraising and how they do it, it's still, they still own that, and I just want to make sure that's clear.
Well, my request.
Because the word unless made me think differently.
No, I understand what you're saying and my request also would be is that people attend PTO meetings and discuss it or email, like, I would encourage communication because when I was PTO president, which I know I keep bringing that up, you know, we'd have a lot of feedback but not much support.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's, you know, like, if you have concerns, absolutely bring them, but also, you know, like, encourage people that maybe are talking to you to go to PTO meetings and lend a hand, you know?
Just like do the same thing with school committee meetings.
Exactly, no, exactly, that's what I'm saying, and communication's important, you know, and the ability to discuss things openly and honestly and transparently is really important, so.
But it is nice to hear from Booster-Thon that you have the opportunity to customize things, so.
Yeah, that's my job.
Yeah.
So, and just, I mean, ano- another fun fact is, uh, this year, 74% of those funds came in from non-parents, so when you think about, you know, you're raising $35,000, $37,000 and three quarters of that is not directly coming from the parents, um, that's a big win for the community as well.
It is, because, you know, parents are always handing out money, you know?
Yep, signing kids up for sports.
No, I know, believe me.
But just know, your concerns are heard. I heard those from Liz, the PTO liaison, um, in our post-program meeting. She was very clear that, hey, um, there's, you know, there's been some talk about the individual prizes and what this would look like and, you know, I shared her, yep, when we sit down at our planning meeting, like, we will address that and Kane had suggested that, hey, that's actually agenda on our, on our school community. I said, great, can I come? I'd love to just talk to them and let them know that we're on your side, we're on everybody, like, we're here to serve you, we, there's no agenda for Booster except for to make a great experience, raise you the funds that you want and try to keep everybody happy all the time, you know, that's not always possible.
But, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Are you good with the conversation? Okay, we'll move on. All right, approval of bill schedule, Sarah?
Yes, um, so our meetings were out of sync with the warrant cycle and there was a single schedule on September 3rd for $99,910.64. And then there is a warrant currently circulating for signatures tonight for a total of $88,375.61, and I will deliver that to the town hall tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. Um, school committee correspondence and reports, um, I don't have anything for that. So go through the committees right now, um, policy.
Did we, right?
Okay, negotiations, we have the MO.
Yes.
MOU, MoA, um, so that's what we met on. Pilgrim Area Collaborative?
Um, we met on last Thursday, um, they did a reorg of, um, the group, Kendra Stutson is the chair, Sheila Vaughn is the vice chair, um, Amy Courtwright is secretary.
Wow, a lot of Silver Lake people.
Yeah, yeah, um, so they, um, they voted to, um, add $25,000, which is standard every year to, what they standardly add every year to the fiscal year 26 retiree health benefits. Um, they also voted to renew a line of credit of 250K for emergency line of credit salaries. Again, it's a standard, um, request and that would just be if, um, there was a, a disaster and they needed that to cover, um, salaries. Um, the executive director offered a tour to, um, anyone in the, um, PAC, um, board that's interested in touring the program. Right now, there's 112 students in the day program, um, and 100, a little over 100 in extended services programs. Um, they had some relocate, relocations of their offices in the Plymouth area, um, their central office is now at Rosneal Road, they had moved from Plymouth Pilgrim Academy, um, and their Bridgewater, Bridgewater office moved to Plymouth Center. Um, they, and this was what I thought was the most exciting news, they are applying to be a service provider for, um, uh, students that are over 21 from over 22, so students can be, um, covered under an IEP and receive PAC services through the age of 22, but they have applied, um, to DDS to be certified as a provider for the age of 22 to 30, uh, which is a, it's a really key point in, um, life for most kids, there's a wealth of services available up until the age of 22. Once you hit 22, it's a little more challenging to navigate services, so, um, Pilgrim Area Collaborative is going through this process to, um, hopefully be approved to be a service provider by DDS.
Great.
For these, these kids in that transition period, they're not kids, adults, so, so yeah, lots of good updates.
Great. All right, um, Katie's not here, so I have her, um, Youth and Rec update. So, um, fall dance on 10/25 for fifth and sixth graders, they're waiting on town admin to okay the money to refinish the gym floor with two added pickleball courts. They're also refinishing the walking track behind the schools and hoping that will be done before November 1st. It will take a few days and, um, Katie said she'll be in touch with you Kane to work on dates for that. Um, after-school programs are up and running, sports, STEM, art and board games. Um, they're adding, they are investigating adding computer technology and a program similar to the show Chronicle where kids interview others on interesting places or people in town. That sounds so cool. Boys and girls travel, um, and in-town basketball are now using the gym Mondays through Thursdays, 5:00 p.m. through 9:00 p.m. That's the update for Youth and Rec. Um, PTO?
Hey there, so first of all, I'm not on my phone, I stopped by my house to get my Chromebook and didn't think you had the charger, so I am using my phone, so I just wanted to put that out there. I am sorry for that. So unfortunately, I missed the first PTO meeting of the year, um, so then we're meeting again, well, they're meeting again tomorrow and I will be there and I just want to say that it would be lovely to see more and more people. I heard there was a lot more people at the last meeting, which is great, um, to be there to, they're very welcoming of all the feedback I give or questions that I have, so definitely, um, would recommend anyone, um, that's interested in going, try to attend a meeting, they would be happy to have you.
Okay. Is that it? No, that's fine. Capital budget, I don't believe, met. Admin review has met and, um, right?
Yes, and I think they have another meeting coming up this week.
Yeah, I think you're right, Thursday, I think, anyway, okay. DIV subcommittee?
We did not.
Okay. Union 31 has a meeting coming up.
October 17th, I believe.
October 17th, okay. All right, um, principal, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, so can I, so I don't know where to talk.
Sorry, so can I, so I don't know where to talk, if I talk about a joint PTO thing, but are we revisiting the thing about um, when they were trying to offer us funding and we talked about the Halifax Hero, would that come up in a different space?
Um.
Cause it's not really a PTO update, but I don't know what we're doing.
I don't know if we talk about that, um, what do you think?
We're meeting with PTO Friday to talk about.
Ideas for that. And so we'll just circle back to it and can, I think it can just sit wait then?
Add it to the agenda for next, okay, all right.
Yeah, we're meeting Friday, the fourth.
Eleven.
Eleven, I mean, eleven, sorry.
Kane, will you provide that as part of your update?
Yep.
All right, Kane, sorry, it's time for your update.
Okay, uh, thank you. I, I think first and foremost thing is introducing Christie Lou Bron here as our new assistant principal.
You're welcome.
Started on September eleventh and she's, she's done a great job just jumping right in and you know, trying to figure everything out and where everything is and learning names and um, it, it's been really great to have her on board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And we have the bonus of having, still, Brian is still in the district, so he can still kind of, he can pick his brain and he's in the building a couple of times a week. So it is kind of vestable for all to have, both of that, so. Thank you. So bus routes, is that, can I address the bus route? So I know that was asked.
Yeah.
Um, so the, the bus routes, we've been looking, Christie and I actually looked at, you know, a whole bunch of different things with, with buses, if we've seen any changes. We have not seen any changes in terms of parent drop-off or pickup. Um, the numbers seem to be pretty consistent, right around seventy or so. Um, and there hasn't been, that's pretty much what we were working with last year. Maybe we have a few more bikers, I've noticed, at least this year compared to last year. But again, it's, it's less than ten. It's, it's a pretty, pretty small number.
But they're not causing traffic issues or anything.
You tell them to get, put their helmets on.
Right.
They're just hassles with those guys, but um, so we haven't seen any with parent drop-off or pickup. The, we actually went back and we compared like bus misconduct slips that we received. We haven't seen any difference from last year to this year, which we were kind of surprised. We thought that, you know, having more kids on only eight buses compared to ten, you know, there might be an uptick, but we did not see any, any noticeable change with bus slips like that. Um, the, the, I think the biggest change that we've noticed is the adjustment to group stops. So that's been a big shift for families. I think that it's been a little bit of a growing pain somewhat to uh, work with families a little bit to be at the group stop or, you know, it's, or we go out and see that, I've driven around town to see if like, oh, is this, is this the best group stop or can we scooch it down the road a little bit? So that's been the biggest hurdle, I think, is probably working with the bus company and maybe making some, some of the adjustments with the group stops.
Can I ask a question? So how is it with the buses? I know that it's been an issue in the past. So the buses getting here on time or the teachers under work today?
They are, they have been getting here actually before eight-thirty, so it's, it's been noticeably different. Um, because before last year, we were really struggling. It was at, we had three, probably three buses that were here after eight-thirty, but by eight-thirty, they've all been in.
I mean, at the end of the day, for the teacher work day to end, that the buses were coming.
At the end of the day, it's a little bit easier for dismissal because there's only eight buses. So it's, I mean, that only adding two more, it does, because we would just do them in the ways that are here. So they, what I've noticed that they've been here. It's been pretty quick. So by like two fifty, I think we've been able to do that.
Two fifty-five is the latest.
Whereas last year, we were probably pushing three or maybe a little after three. Um, we are trying to work with the bus company. There's, I'm not sure if all the routes are perfectly balanced, because we've noticed that there is one or two buses that the, it's, it's packed and where there might be an opportunity for us. I don't know how easy it is for the bus company to maybe take like a chunk of it and like slide it to a different bus, but um, there are one or two that are, that are pretty significantly packed that maybe they could, but I don't know how easily the ship that would be for the bus company. But, but they've been, they've been, we've been working with them and, you know, we've been talking with the bus drivers and the families that was basically the group stops. And families have been more accepting of that, I think.
That used to be the norm, group stops. And it's actually nice to walk around my neighborhood in the morning and see people talking and at the group stops, because I think that's how I got to know all my neighbors.
My kids love it, actually.
Yeah, no, I mean, and like they look for it, like I actually think like for a community and to remember, like some of these folks, their kids might, you know, like, you know, their kids might be young and don't remember group stops, but the whole time my kids are in elementary school, it was group stops. And I feel like with COVID and, you know, we got away from it, but I think it's actually, as long as it's safe, a great thing to have happen again. And it's so much more efficient.
Oh, absolutely.
Like, I mean, it's.
It would literally be making stops at every corner.
Every house, yeah.
If you make a stop behind it, then you're.
And so, I mean, cause I don't know what the like rules are, like I think you, like kindergartners, you can stop at their house, but as long as we're, I just, I think it's great for our community. I know it takes a little more effort, I remember, but.
Right.
Um, again, I love it when I see people out talking after they've put their kids on the bus, like, I don't know.
Really is good. And I, I just, not, every situation is a little different, so I think I, I try and you know, be understanding where some of those group stops are, the speed of the, the speed limits on certain roads.
No, I mean, that's what I'm saying, as long as it's safe, that's, you know, but the group stops itself, I think it's a great thing and it's great for our budget and it's great for our community, as long as it's safe. Hmm?
And the environment.
And the environment, yes, that's true.
I do think it hasn't had a huge impact from going from ten to, to eight.
That's great.
Change is really hard. Like, I think initially people. Yeah, I mean, you, you, especially morning routines are difficult and people know what they know and they don't wanna, how is this new thing gonna change things? But, you know, it sounds like it's, it's plugging along.
It really is. It's good. And, and I, and I do, you know, give kudos to the staff that do the parent drop-off and pick-up. They're, they're pretty systematic in how they do it. So because we keep cars off the road on one oh six, so they have a good system in place that they make sure that cars are in and out pretty quick. So they do a good job over there.
All right.
Um, flyers, do you want to go with flyers? There's a few flyers that are in there. And South Shore Children's Chorus. We've got Cub Scouts, and then there was the Natural Gas one that I gave him up last year.
You guys want to see them or?
Do you mind my, like?
I know, it's my.
You want to?
I pass them around.
The Natural Gas one is one that we also did last year.
Yeah, I remember that.
It's like a little, it has like a little pamphlet to it.
We had a lot of conversation about that one last year.
Yeah. Yeah, here.
Sorry. Things different?
I don't think so. I think one is a little bit more, I don't know.
I believe they had like a K to two version and then they had like a three to six version. I think they're, if they did, I think that is kind of a difference.
I was just wondering, what these singers all come in September or October, but they don't audition.
I don't remember where we landed on the EverSource stuff.
We voted to approve it.
To approve it, yeah.
So anyone have any discussion or, um, I'll make a motion to um, distribute the EverSource, Cub Scout, and South Shore, what is it?
Children's Chorus.
Children's Chorus, flyers for, for dispersion.
Second.
All right, we'll take a vote, Lori?
Yeah.
Karen? Okay, Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is a yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And just on school council, we are going to start up, our first meeting will be in October, just like it was last year. Uh, we just have new members that are joining. So we have new teachers that are on and obviously Christie will be on, but we're also looking for a new community member. So we're looking at possibly, we had Officer McIntyre was our person last year. Well, we have a new SRO that we're looking at, so Officer Simpson, might see if Officer Simpson would be willing to help us out for our community person.
What's the date of your meeting?
It is, it's the last Wednesday of the month.
And you can have the meeting even if you don't have the community member correctly?
Yes, yes, we can.
So October thirtieth?
Yeah, that will be that first meeting.
Okay.
And the parents that were on it last year, they had asked to stay on for this year, so they are continuing for this year.
Okay.
Once we have our new meeting and share that next meeting.
How, what's the enrollment right now?
Five thirty-two, I believe.
Okay, and how, how big did kindergarten end up being?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two? Okay. All right, anything else?
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Sarah?
Good evening, everyone. And Madam Chair. Um, so I think I explained last meeting. Did I explain last meeting that I was going to be presenting differently? I don't know, I have so many school committee meetings. Um, so what I want to say about the budget document that was put in a folder for you is that we have a, an increase in services assessment and student supports through special ed. Um, the increase so far this year has, I'm sorry, the known increase this year is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. We have a placement that was budgeted for, for this year, which turned out to be, um, we received what's called an LEA assignment, a local educational authority assignment, where the student um, is the programmatic responsibility of our special, special education department, but the financial responsibility of another district. So we had budgeted a hundred and fifty-five thousand in tuition and transportation for this student and, um, and somebody else gets to pay for it, which makes me kind of happy. So overall, right now, we have a thirty-one thousand dollar uh, increase in our special education services assessments and student supports. Other than that, are there any questions about the budget?
Anyone?
No.
No, all right. All right, no. Um, Christine's not here. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Uh, town meeting warrant article. So we have prior year bills, bills from FY twenty-four that we received after the June first closing date and going to be submitting a warrant article for town meeting for five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents in unpaid bills.
Okay.
So we received those after the June first closeout and after we turned money back to the town, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure I got it all straight, so when it comes up, the town meeting.
Can you just give me that last figure again, yeah? Fifty-nine ninety-three? Thank you. Sixty. Got it. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip that second thing. Um, Christine's not here, so.
No report tonight from special education. Dr. Panares is not able to be here.
Okay. Krista?
Hi, hi, everyone.
Hello.
Um, I have a few things on the curriculum instruction and assessment update. Uh, the first thing um, on the update is a curriculum review cycle. If you probably saw the documents, um, the guideline or the guide for the curriculum review cycle. Uh, people might wonder why a curriculum review cycle. Um, the reason for that is because there can be lots of, lots of things, lots of curriculum that people want to look at, to change. It's helpful to have some kind of a systemic way to look at that, um, so that you're not trying to adopt all kinds of curriculums at the same time, but that, um, there's sort of a, a process, um, sort of a scheduling and different phases that um, we can go through and get um, voice, uh, teacher voice, get um, family voice and things like that. So this is, this is an introduction of a curriculum review cycle. Like I said, it's in, in your documents. Um, it'll start this year. Um, this year it starts with math. Um, and the review for math will span over the next two years. And then next fall, we'll start the process for, it should say, um, science, technology, and engineering. You can see in the back of the, of the, of the um, thing that I provided, the overview for several years. And basically, the two-year, two-year review will continue and all areas have been through the curriculum review. Um, it's really, again, implemented to support thoughtful and continued improvement, to align and support with the strategy for district improvement, to make sure that the curriculum that we're looking at matches with our um, district improvement plan, with our school improvement plans, and that also it's aligned to the frameworks and other things. So that's just something I wanted to give you an update on. So it will start with math this year. I met with um, the K through six curriculum person and the seven through twelve for math. We met the other day, they've met again, and they'll be sending something out to um, faculty to ask them to be part of this two-year curriculum review process. Um, and the needs might be a little different, K through six and seven through twelve. It generally involves also surveying um, entire faculty and staff, students, and parents, just to find out, what do you think about the, you know, this curriculum, or do you have any, it's just a way to gather information from them. So we'll go through that and then we'll go through it for the next content areas and then it would be sort of a revolving cycle that we'll go through. And like I said, it lends voice to people to be able to be a part of that. And it's a good way to also plan for budget pieces. So it's a, that's part of the phase two, is to make sure that we're not trying to do everything at once, but there's a process and a way to do that. Second thing I put on the um, update was about September twenty-sixth. Um, we, on the afternoon of September twenty-sixth, educators spent time looking at their goals, making sure they're connected to the strategy for district improvement, school improvement goals, and looking at MCAS and local data, um, because goals are due on November first for educators. Um, the third thing is on November fifth, um, we'll have a professional development day. During this day, K through two educators will be working on learning more about structured literacy and the science of reading. We're going to have a professional development um, provided by the Stern Center, which is really largely an OG affiliated group. So really looking at structured literacy and the science of reading is sort of that overview, um, informative piece for K through two teachers. And then grades three through six, we'll be examining um, more about writings, instruction, genre study, and common assessments. And also, um, Brian and I met with a, a group of um, representative members from the different schools um, to talk about what would, what should we do, what would you like to do, and really involving teachers in that, picking up from what we worked on on the third, kind of focusing on the fifth. So we'll meet again and then we'll have a final meeting as a, as a collective to kind of get the ideas that teachers have about things that are really helpful for them. And then seven through twelve, they'll continue to focus on department work from the third. And then other educators in specific um, groups or departments will also be participating in specific department work, things that need to be continued from the September third work and things that they need to focus on and complete. The other piece is a literacy needs assessment. So um, this, this may seem in, 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 in contrast to what I said a few minutes ago about curriculum pieces. But one of the things that, um, in looking at the data early on, MCAS data in particular, um, I, I along with some other folks, thought it would be beneficial and helpful to have what we call a literacy needs assessment. And what I mean by that is sometimes if you're, if you're looking at data, you're not sure, is it alignment, is it um, is it alignment, is it, um, due to specific things? What you really need is a group to, to look at all the things that you're doing and say, okay, this is your data, this is your curriculum, this is your instructional practice, this is what's happening as a collective, K through twelve. And these are some suggestions we would make. These things are going really well, continue doing it. These are some areas that we think you should look at and these are some things you could do. So really, it's a needs assessment that would eventually lead us to a literacy plan. So it's again, a strategic approach, um, and it, it felt a little bit that this was something that we needed to embark on to at least start the process to kind of move things forward in some ways. So that's just a little bit about that, something we'll be working on. And then the fifth thing is school data team. So at all the schools, they've been meeting to look at both local and standardized data to figure out intervention groups that need to happen and ways that they can inform their instruction and, um, address some needs. And the last thing is the National Honor Society tomorrow night at high school. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
How do you, um, decide what to do for the professional development days? Like what drives the, you know, where does it come from? Is there teacher input or is it looking at data or?
Yeah, it's a combination of a lot of things. I think the first thing is for, for me, I'm coming here was the strategy for district improvement, right? So what are the things that we said that we need to do in the certain categories? And usually a part of that is looking at the data to examine that, to figure out, okay, we need professional development in this area or teachers need to work on this thing. And then also another piece to it too, is teacher, teacher voice and having those conversations. Like I said, Brian and I met with a group, we'll meet with them two more times, and also, um, talking with principals and the department or curriculum coordinators at the seven through twelve level too. So it's like a combination of all of those things.
Okay. I just, I feel like our ELA, we're still, I feel like they're really good, um, in general, so I was just surprised to see the grades three through six working on all of the writing stuff, because I feel like they're doing such great work already, so I just was surprised to see that, I was just curious.
Yeah, I think last year, as I understand it, in, last year in March, they worked on common assessments, writing common assessments, the teachers did. And, um, now it's sort of solidifying that work and making sure that, um, everybody's got the pieces that they need, they've earned a little bit of time with that.
Oh, great. And then for that literacy needs assessment, so who would be doing that work? That just be in-house?
Yep, um, that's a group called The Hill for Literacy. And so it's a group that is, um, like lots of groups, keys to literacy, different groups will, um, conduct, you know, um, a literacy needs assessment, they're experts, they, they understand all of the systemic pieces of reading and writing and, and can look at what you're doing and just kind of give you, um, analyze that information and give you a report on, on what they think and what they see.
So my concern is just budget. So where, is that all set? Like we've budgeted for that and it's someplace and it's okay? Unless it's dollar signs when I see that, like a.
Good question.
Okay. And, um, that's it. Thank you for answering my questions. Appreciate it.
I also really love the memo. Like honestly, like it was great to have all this to read before the meeting. I loved it. Thank you. That was great info. It's nice to have time, because you know, there's such limited time, we come in and we're getting so much information, it's nice to have the, anyway, thank you. Anybody else? All right, Jill?
So, um, the first thing, there's quite a few things, um, tonight. In your packet, you'll find the homeschool enrollment for both K through six and through, seven through twelve. You'll find that Halifax is represented by the yellow line. And from last year, um, we have an increase in homeschool enrollment from eleven students to seventeen in grades K through six, um, whereas at the secondary level, we have a decline, uh, in Halifax from seven to three. But you can see all of the communities there represented on the chart. The next chart is the, um, student enrollment. And once again, Halifax is represented in yellow. And you'll see that the, the overall population hasn't been fluctuating greatly. The biggest change in the, the elementary schools is Kingston is showing, um, an increase over the past several years. And then if you look at seven through twelve, um, a, a little increase for Kingston, uh, Halifax as well, but, um, a little decline for Plimpton. So the enrollments are represented there visually, but then you'll also see its impact in the October one chart, which you're familiar with and you recall last year, we added pre-K as its own separate category and we also added the, um, uh, special education programs for our older students at the secondary level. In that, uh, final column, you'll see that Halifax has a grand total of 1,069 students across the district. Kingston is represented in green, Plimpton is represented in orange. And then the overall total of all of our schools, we're at 3,610 students in the district combined. If you turn to the second page of the enrollment chart, you'll see how this impacts our assessments. The first assessment is the Silver Lake assessment, um, for FY twenty-six, and that is thirty-two point six, I believe, the font is so little, I apologize. For Halifax this year, as opposed to last year, it was thirty-two point five. And the shared cost percentage this year is twenty-seven point three percent versus last year, it's down from last year, which was twenty-eight point, I think it's a six.
It is a six.
Thank you. Um, so those are our enrollment charts that we typically, um, provide to you at this part of the year. Also, in your packet, you'll find our budget timeline. And I think it's really important to note, we, um, typically by regulation, we get our, our budgets, uh, approved, uh, within, uh, by March, and that allows us to get a number to the towns, uh, by regulation. And that is the authority of the school committee. And so it's really important that the, the school committee, uh, has an understanding of that timeline regardless of the fact that some communities may want the budget earlier. The, sometimes they ask for a budget before it's required by regulation. Um, the other thing I want to ask you is, how would you like us to proceed? We're already beginning, we're already starting, we've set up meetings, uh, to start planning our, um, our budget season. And typically what happens is we get input from our special education director with estimates for the upcoming school year. We get, we get, uh, requests from technology and requests from curriculum instruction assessment, uh, from our curriculum coordinator in the past, and they present, um, at our, uh, joint budget meeting in November. But really, at, at this point of the year, we start putting together our school budgets and thinking about, um, what it is that we're going to need for the, the next school year. And so in the past, traditionally, we have generally provided you with a level services budget, and then anything beyond level services, we present to you separately. Again, we are going to be having a meeting with the towns, but we start this process sooner. So what is it that the school committee would like to see from us in our preliminary budget?
Definitely level service. You know, I mean, that's, and, um, I would like to see the possibility of cost savings, like when we went from ten buses to eight buses, is there places in the budget where we can have more savings by looking at enrollment and, you know, how things are, you know, just for more cost saving? Personally, that's what I, I don't, I mean, I'm not speaking for everyone, but, I mean, I, it's, I mean, if there's things we can look at, you know, to see if we can change, because that was a significant savings without a lot of impact to the students. We're finding out, you know, the buses are going really well. And so if we can look at places instead of this is how we've always done it, to maybe we could, you know, so that we can preserve, um, teaching positions, because I know, and last year we did end up with the budget being more than the year before, but we still had to cut so much. So I'd really like to head that off and see if we can look at different things and, so I, just to be clear, we, we can't charge for buses? Like that's not allowed or is it? Because I feel.
I feel like we've gotten.
Yeah, because, because I feel like, like last year we missed, like we talked about it and then it was like too late to ask the town or something, like if I'm.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, just like looking at different ideas of what we can do to help preserve staff, basically. So is charging for buses? How much would it be, um, or what would be effective, you know? I don't know, just looking at various creative ideas to reserve staff, because I don't want to.
We'll get an answer from Desi.
Okay.
But I, I, I was under the impression, I, my memory was that we found out that we couldn't, because we, we had this conversation during COVID as well, if you recall.
I feel, but then I thought we found out we could and I don't know, I just, yeah, because we're on the same page.
Definitely had a conversation last year where we talked about it and we were pursuing it and when we got to the point where it's like, oh, so let's put that on town meeting, we'd missed the deadline to get that on the warrant.
I thought that we found out we couldn't because of regionalization.
I think you said we could at the elementary level.
That's, yeah.
Not at the seven through twelve level, because they're regionalized.
Right. We share buses.
Yeah, so.
So it's intertwined.
Yeah.
So again.
Yeah, no, I know.
All for regionalization.
It doesn't make any sense.
It's not as easy as that.
You're not independent. Sorry.
And we don't want to do independent buses, because that would be even more money, so we, it's, it's such a delicate balance all the time.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, but we'll, we'll get a, we'll get, we'll get an answer upfront, so that we don't even have to worry about it if it's not even in the realm of possibility.
Yeah, no, that, just things like that, you know, where can we possibly, you know, and, um, you know, even PTO still is offering us money, so is there a place we can use the PTO money to help free up other budget items? You know? So things like that, like I, I, we really need to be creative at this point.
I'd like to talk, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know exactly how to map it out, but I mean, like we, we took things out of last year's budget, which, you know, we're learning, okay, wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be in some instances. But we also took some of the things that we wanted to do, like the Halifax Heroes, like is there a way that we can put some sort of a independent, like add-on list?
Well, I think that, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So like, yes, there's a level service budget, but, you know, what would it, what would we need to add to the budget to achieve these extra things that we wanted last year that we couldn't fulfill?
But I would personally rather add staff back before we do.
Agreed, but I, I feel like, I feel like we need like a, a list.
Right.
And we as a committee need to prioritize that list as to, staff should be first, but.
And custodial, you know, all the things, like I would rather, you know, I mean, I agree with you, it's good to have a comprehensive list, so we can make the best, most informed decisions, but my personal priority would be to add back staff, but, and I'm not saying it, yours isn't, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
I mean, you know, there was a lot of feedback within our community about, you know, this, this isn't a lot of money to put this program and the reach would be broad, and Jessica, I know you felt really strongly about that. So like, I don't want to discount that, like we, we shouldn't consider that again, like it should be back on the table. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Jessica?
So just like in the principal report, how we address the impact of the cut for the buses? I think that that's something we should look at too, what's the impact of the custodial cut?
Yeah.
Pair.
No, I agree.
Teacher cut, so I think that, that's really important information. If you could do sort of the same thing you did for the buses for us, like, hey, you know, we found that, that, you know, we really need more support in these classrooms, so we need some of those pairs back or whatever it is, then that would help, I think everyone to make better decisions about going forward, where we need to put money back in to the budget.
Thanks.
All right. So the, the next item is, um, just an overview and I'll try to go as quickly as possible, because I know it's getting late. But our opening day for staff took place on August twenty-sixth and this year's theme was outer space. And, uh, we introduced our new staff at this meeting. And if I recall, we were able to go over that list with you, but, um, we hadn't hired Christie yet, so, so welcome, Christie. On the next slide, uh, you're already there, thank you. We set academic goals in each of our schools and to try to meet these goals, we implemented panorama assessment in October and February and used those results to address, uh, student social and emotional needs. We continued the implementation of second step at the elementary and middle school. And we updated our website to improve accessibility with translation, video and sound. Next slide. We use data to inform our instructional practices and to support students in the least restrictive environment for our students with special needs. We launched a comprehensive data dashboard to help us to monitor student growth and achievement throughout the school year. And you may recall, our principals shared their results last spring. We will have another update on our MCAS results, uh, this, late this fall, um, at our, how, in our fall, November probably meeting?
Okay.
Our, uh, MTSS team, our multi-tiered system of supports team, worked to define expectations for all support teams in each building, so that it's consistent across the district. We partnered with Chris Taylor and Teachers Twenty-One to examine our data and expose learning gaps for our student subgroups. Next slide. We continued, uh, UBD curriculum units, designed and implemented common assessments and benchmark calendars, and we completed learning tours at each of our schools to help build our instructional leadership capacity. As a district, we also accomplished another, a number of structural changes, including consolidating our HR-related data to establish greater position control. We made a number of changes to our financial structure in order to meet DESI and state regulations. And we participated in numerous school committee and town sessions to help explain and support these changes in our multiple budgets. The result was the passage of each school committee-approved budget in all three towns and an updated regional agreement to include pre-K at the regional level. Next slide. So the, the result was greater transparency, especially with regards to special education and regulatory compliance. These are, were the actual number of changes that we made last year. So you recall, we added pre-K, special education programs, K through six are in the, um, elementary schools, they're not considered Silver Lake anymore. Out-of-district, um, expenses for students from your town, if they're in grades seven through twelve plus in pre-K are now part of the Silver Lake budget. We updated all of the shared cost contracts, so that they would be aligned with the regional agreement, they had not been. And we extended this, uh, we put the extended school year program into the school budgets where they belonged. And, uh, the two forty grant is now used to pay for out-of-district tuitions by district rather than individual positions, which was much more difficult to track. So this is, um, hopefully will help to streamline and it allowed us to eliminate a number of revolving accounts, which, um.
Sympathizing.
Yes, well, it, it'll be better for all of us to be able to see them more readily. So, um, greater budget transparency and compliance with laws and regulations. So these things have been in place for, for, for decades. We took care of it over the last two years, um, with the, the changes that were took place. And, uh, the end result were those changes last year to our budget. So this year, um, the leadership team renewed its commitment to our goals and vision over the summer, and we continue to make sure and want to make sure that all students have access to high-quality learning experiences that are aligned with our state standards. With this in mind, we have worked this summer with our principals, assistant principals, coordinators and directors to address achievement gaps. Next slide. Our group leaders, um, presented updates to the SDI and each of the groups presented each of these objectives. Students, again, will be surveyed this year in the fall and winter, help, to help us support students in need. We will expand second step into the high school. This is our anti-bullying and pro-social skills curriculum. Our principals will be focused on ways to improve parent and community involvement in our schools. For objective two, we will continue our efforts to align the curriculum with state standards to make sure all students have access to grade-level expectations. Next slide. As we update our IUP's five oh fours and district curriculum accommodation plan, we will also create a plan to assess their effectiveness as we define our plans to improve our co-teaching model. Next slide. This year we'll also implement a formal curriculum review cycle, which was presented this evening. And, uh, next slide, objective four, as always, we will work to provide training and professional development opportunities to support these initiatives, which we also talked about tonight as to how we make these decisions. With regards to our budget process, we will work this year to align our chart of account to match with DESI, after we took the numerous steps last year to clean up longstanding practices that were not, um, appropriate as a partially regionalized school district. So, um, those are some of the things that we'll be working on structurally this year as well, and these are part of our goals. In your packet, you have a copy of this presentation, as well as the draft strategy for district improvement, which is. which is what we, uh, updated over the summer with this, with the help of our principals, coordinators, department heads, central office staff.
Great. Any questions?
Thank you.
And each school makes their own goals as well, right?
Yes. So they also, the school improvement plan, um, that is worked on with, um, the school council should align with the SDI, but can also incorporate other needs that the, the school council and school have identified as particular to their school.
Okay. When can we expect to see that for?
So we, we can propose a draft for, for November.
Okay. Great. Great. All right, you're done?
Yes.
All right. I don't want to cut anyone off. I did earlier.
I had a lot tonight, so I'm sorry.
No, it's good. Um, so October 14th is Columbus. They used to remember, October 14th is Columbus Day. Um, October 17th is a joint meeting of Silver Lake and Union 31. Um, October 21st, 24th is an early release for grades K through six for parent-teacher conferences. November 5th is in-service for teachers. November 11th is Veterans Day. November 14th is another joint meeting, I guess, with Union 31 and Silver Lake. Um, and then November 25th is our next meeting, so. Anyone who'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Uh, roll call Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Myself as yes. Thank you, everyone.